And let's review and approve for at least for you the board minutes of December 5. Any additions or additions?
I didn't get anything discussed until they came in, medical sort of things like that, but nothing that wants.
You get the prize for being a public member.
Okay. Next, um, next. Great, anyone else? I read them and it seemed like a very thoughtful meeting. I wasn't prepared. Any, okay. Then I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as printed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Communications and public comments? Then policies, anything regarding that?
No, I'm gonna have a few for you pretty soon.
Okay. So let's go on to the superintendent's report.
Well, we went to the governor's, whatever that was called.
Education summit.
Education summit. So we can say that we were there and he can choose. And there we go. You know, how 300 people are going to come to some brilliant, you know, idea or strategy, but it's not gonna happen. But I suppose they're gonna parse through all the comments that were submitted online and see if some themes emerge. But I will say, I mean, he didn't really talk about his agenda that had been tacked onto the back of the memo that came in.
I thought to his credit, he sat up with people who were proud of him. I don't know what occurred from that, but it was nice he wasn't up there advocating.
Right. So there was that. We've got the draft of the integrated field review back from the state. We went through it with Josh Soulay, who is the person who runs the process for the agency of education. It was pretty positive. It's kind of set up for each area. There's some bullet points, there's a couple of recommendations and a couple of commendations. Pretty much they were unexpected. We corrected a few things that were wrong, so we're kind of being fixed. So that'll be coming along.
What, that'll be presented to us?
Yeah, yeah. As soon as I get the draft, so we'll make that an agenda item for discussion. In some ways, it's kind of an internal document in terms of, you know, things to work on.
Mm-hmm.
But it certainly has a board overview piece too, you know, so should help inform you about the district as a whole, because it is about a whole SUV, not individual. It's not parsed out into individuals, schools for the most part. There's some things like personalized learning plans, which applies to grade seven through 12, so, you know, that's kind of school-specific, but other things not so much. And where you are the last town for the, you have it on your agenda item for discussing and I hope approving the board actions to strengthen the existing governance structure of the Windham Northeast Supervisory Union and as soon as we have that, as soon as we have our continuous improvement plan, all those things go into the document, send it to the state this week, so. There'll be a holiday.
Did we vote on that or anything?
You're going to, you're gonna get it. And I'll tell you more about it, kind of how that process has gone when we get to that. The superintendent's search committee is up there still, establishing exactly who's on the committee, but that's going along. I think the posting is out there already on school spring. I haven't looked, but I believe it is. We are in the interview process for the director of student services, so that's going along.
Are there still openings on that committee or have they been filled or will Ed be sending out another email?
You're talking about the superintendent's?
Yes.
Yeah, Ed sent out an email, you know, I think if, yeah, I think if anyone's interested, you should contact him real quick at this point. They're, they really are trying to have the committee set, you know, this one.
And you don't know whether Ed is looking for more people at this point? Of different categories?
I think we have, the teachers are set, principals are set, the, there's school board members a little up in the area, he's trying to get sort of representation from, you know, the different boards and, and I think there might be openings for community members or parents, so, and I think he asked all of you school board members to send suggestions to him, was that an email?
Not me, yes, maybe.
I saw that request and so if we've got any good ideas about parents or community members, we should send them to Ed.
Quickly.
Quickly.
Maybe he sent to issue board members?
I'm not sure.
Did you get that from Eric?
Did you get an email from Ed?
I think a general one, I can look, I thought it was some general thing about superintendent, but I didn't think of a community member thinking it.
This was an email saying, "Do you want to serve?" And, "Do you have any ideas about?" I said I would like volunteer to be on the committee, but I didn't think about parents or community members, so. And Ed is just trying to obviously piece it together.
That's what I got.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for Ed? No. Principals' reports.
Sorry, didn't look off these, but. So just numbers-wise, I put in the trimester ended, reporters went home on December 1st, so kind of a check-in on behavior data, just based on, based on our office referrals reports, so I don't, I keep things in black and white, that's stupid, but it gives you kind of a quick idea. The bottom chart on the first page just shows you a comparison of office referrals from this year compared to last year, and while those numbers are quite a bit bigger for this year, I also think that's a bit of our procedure, just how we're with the Jody kind of, that's happening more consistently, so if anything, it's a little more accurate. List of harassment bullying investigations to date, on the back side is just class size that we know of as of now, which I should have included last time as well, just because it's pertinent for a bunch of discussions.
Yep.
Then I have some updates on continuous improvement plans. We had a, we added a section on evaluation, changed the wording on, I know we have another line to actually approve this later on, but should I save that then?
Yeah.
I'll save that part. Winter sports is on track. Just a quick update on inkling, which is that time of the day for students to start doing some student-directed activities, being part in that way. We have a couple of charts to kind of show you where we're at with that. We're kind of, you know, we're implemented, but we're certainly not to a refined place. And then the last piece is just a little blurb on Studio Y Goes West. First grade just wrapped up their last, the last of the first rounds. Janelle's gonna do Studio Y Goes West, six grades with kindergarten in the forest first, before bringing it out west, and then second rounds all start when we get back to the sixth grade, going out there at their second rounds. So a lot of heavy lifting as far as program development is coming up. The first one was kind of our splash, the second one here, we're really trying to incorporate more of the curriculum from the, from what the kids are doing in their day-to-day schooling and out there, so. Yeah, so sorry, that was my Cliff Notes version of.
I have a question, kind of goes back to budget. So the teacher salaries, are those the teachers on the list we got last time of all the teachers' names and things, is that the same that's reflected in this number here or was anything changed?
We did not adjust any staffing numbers from last time to this time in the budget that we were.
Thank you. So there wasn't the change in, that's what you were saying?
Right.
Right, nothing, nothing changes.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Ed?
Thank you for adding me the referrals and what type of information.
Great. Yeah, sorry, I kind of didn't like that, but I feel like you mixed something. Last time I didn't have any paper, I felt like that was like a nicer conversation, so now you have something to walk away with.
You didn't like that as in?
I don't know, just, I don't know, I just kind of liked seeing what I wrote.
Fairly dry, yeah, yeah. I, I am, uh, there's a lot to talk about, and I'm, I'm very curious to hear more about Studio Y. And I also, I mean, you know, how beneficial is inkling for your students? Most people have no idea what inkling is and to have a chart about what, what people think about inklings, it's interesting, it's definitely.
Right, so, I'm sorry, I should have clarified this.
Lana speaks up here.
This is, this was like staff perceptions and understanding of that. I do give this to parents or students, which also would have been interesting, but this was just a quick, it's, it's a new procedure for us, it's a new system, if you will, and as I kind of talked about, like, we're, we're still all over the place in implementation, and part of that was purposeful, because I wanted people to find, to find what works for them, supposed to be telling them. There's a lot of places doing things like this out there, so there's a lot of resources and people are kind of settling into that. And we've kind of naturally found this group where like K through two are kind of doing more of a centers-based approach, because that extra structure seems to really help them, whereas three through six are doing more of that, you know, developing projects and for their own purposes and.
So at best, the teachers are, seem sort of so-so about it, right?
Yeah, and this was all teachers, so this was essentialists and nurse and, you know, everybody combined, special educators, everybody all into that. If I sussed this out, my, my thought is, my thinking would be that classroom teachers are finding it more beneficial than other, other people who aren't necessarily seeing it. In the current schedule, all essentialists have inkling times available for them to push in and like help their grade levels at least once a week, and that hasn't really gotten up and going all the way. Like Pat's doing some, excuse me, Pat Gomes, the P E teachers doing some experimenting with helping kids like track fitness and set fitness goals. Part of the commission's really worried about the fitness test that's coming up that everyone has to do, but also because it's an area of interest for them. You know, but not all essentialists have kind of found their groove in that, so again, I think that is reflected in some of the pieces that are here. Special educators are a little bit torn because they're pulling kids out to do the services and they're like, "Ah, that's the same thing I want them to be doing," and so it's just like, yeah, you know, like, yeah, it's a, it's an ongoing struggle that we have. So it's really, I think it's true picture.
Is one good or bad?
Bad. Yeah, sorry, I didn't have the, the like, the descriptors, but it was something like, "This is awful, it's harming children." On five, it's like, "This is amazing, it's changing the world."
Yeah, so the majority are positive, right?
Right.
Can we go back to Studio Y for a second?
Sure.
And it's my understanding, actually, that this week is when the first graders are out there, and by the end of this week, we will have had every grade level, one through six, and the kindergartners are doing some cool stuff here in the woods, which is sort of getting, you know, prep for all of that. I wondered if you had any overall feedback that you could share with us? I've heard some, but I wondered what you might, might share with us.
Yeah, I mean, it's all been super, super positive. We just had, last week, we went to the staff, had our staff meeting at Studio Y Goes West, which was, too deep brief about Studio Y Goes West, like all, everyone knows. It was a really good conversation, a lot of, you know, similar things, a lot of staff feel left out, you know, and so there, the kind of two pieces that are coming up the strongest as far as like needs or next steps is like, A, the planning time, which is what we're really just getting into heavy now, like before this, it's all been on Janelle's brain to like craft it. Teachers now have that experience, now they have to be part of like creating experiences, but that requires planning time. People are trying to figure out, you know, what, you know, what does that look like and where does that go? And we do have time, we just have to like make it a priority, you know? And then the other big piece that came out of that as far as like needs or next steps was, um, oh, sorry, it's only a blank there. Planning. Okay, well, anyways, I'll come back to it, I have it on documents someplace, but the, but all the positives around kids being really excited about going, teachers love being able to watch their kids in a different environment, a lot of talk about kids who might be struggling here in a lot of ways, finding a way to be a leader out there, particularly in the structure building or in the cook, you know, like all the hidden chefs and, you know, all those things, just for kids having an opportunity to shine, like those, those experiences. Oh, sorry, this was the other thing, sorry. How that, that transferred back to here, like the relevance of like those experiences and that kind of lab school piece of like, okay, we're trying some things out there, how do we bring it back here? That bridge isn't all the way built yet, you know, like the desire's there and like people are wanting to find out how to do that, but it's not always there. People love the language about it, like Ann B T was talking about, she like brought back a whole bunch of like, you know, just words like, "Oh, we're taking a detour," or, you know, this is just pieces of how we talk about confronting challenges and thinking about those challenges with students. So, yeah, I mean, like really positive, strong desire, at least on the staff, and to want to like make that more, make it more of a strong connection.
And when you say staffing left out, left out of the planning process, left out of the participation, left out of what?
Yes, yeah, all of it. So like, you know, if you are doing title reading support, you're not going on Studio Y, right, you still have all your other grades that you're providing services for. Same thing for, you know, essentialists, you know, so there's, there's a chunk of our staff who don't have that opportunity or experience to.
Because it's the grade level teachers who are going up there.
Yeah, yeah, and the parents and stuff, so. And so people, I mean, I don't know how much that, it matters only in that like it's a school-wide initiative and it's like an important part of what we're trying to do, so.
What matters is depending on how, in connecting it back to what happens here.
Right, and we start building those bridges in a more concrete way, you know, whether that's through the language or simple things like doing some pre-work before you go out and then doing some follow-up work when you get back, you know, we've had this experience, yeah, we've learned from that. Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think there's other ways of getting people involved, where they videotape like almost the whole thing, you know, and Janelle and I were talking one day like about the idea of using that videotape as a place to like debrief with kids, like, "Hey, here was a challenge you were super successful at, let's look at the tape and like, what did you do here?" You know, and they, they do a lot of that sort of stuff, it's been around for a long time, it's, I think kids on the spectrum are different things, but bringing that back for anybody, you know, just, you know, here's a challenge you had, how did you go? So that might be a way to like get Joe more into it, you know, Joe debriefs with all the classes when they come back, but like actually taking that and now doing something with it, you know, instead of just talking to them, like trying to do something with them, so. So, yeah, that's kind of how people feel left out. For what it's worth, like in the upcoming adventures, Janelle's starting to bring in other people to play parts and roles, and so that will work. I think there's something for the gym teacher, there might be something for the principal coming up, so there's other ways to entangle that people can get involved, but, yeah, that's part. And we haven't talked a lot about it, because a lot of it was so secret.
I know.
But now that that seal's broken, we, you know, a lot more of that.
In the new year.
Yeah.
And it will be good at some point to get, to be able to share that more with the town.
Yeah, I mean, I would anticipate that we'll have some sort of presentation, but last year they did a little presentation on the work they did with the Historical Society, and I imagine that that, a similar kind of thing can happen for, or at least for town at the end of the day, but we can certainly plan to have a good board presentation, even if, or, I don't know, we haven't had a community education sort of community meeting in a while, because we were getting started with, but maybe we can prep there and then present here, so.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Josh.
Okay, um, let's see, why don't we go on to business managers and financial?
Well, um, so far, not much going on. The health insurance is, the costs have still only been encumbered to, through December. We just got January's bill yesterday. Rhonda still has to go through it, make sure everything's right, and then we can start encumbering from January to June. Everything looks on track in your budget, except for secondary tuition, the seventh and eighth. Right now, we're projecting about $245,000 over budget. So, um, but the rest of your budget looks, looks good, but that's the one piece that we're definitely going to exceed the budget, and by a lot. Did anyone have any questions on the financials or?
Let's see, on the lines, it looks as though, this is under operations and maintenance, like 2,600 category. There, you've got capital improvement repairs, capital improvements, something else.
Yep.
Those, I am thinking will be covered by a transfer from the reserve fund, because in the, when all is said and done, is that correct?
Correct. We want to meet with Adam to make sure we've coded the right things to the capital reserve, but in order for us to move money from a reserve account, we're gonna need a board vote. So what we thought is that we would wait until we're sure of all the numbers and then have you make one motion instead of several. Also, we weren't sure where you all are with the West Room, the West West, because that was discussed as being part of the transfer.
Right. Yeah, they, apparently Adam said he has a quote coming in, and that was like two weeks ago.
Okay.
And I haven't had much passing, so we're not really in here.
Okay, well, we thought when we got ready, we would give you all the information and then have you make one vote to move it from the capital reserve and to cover the expenses, rather than to do it piecemeal.
We've been asking for a while, so what you're recommending is that it be kind of everything all together rather than?
Yes, we'll do it all at once.
Obviously before the end of the fiscal year, so we can, especially if we've got 200 and some odd dollars of deficit, we want to cover as much as we can.
Right, and you, you may want to take some of the tuition reserve and cover some of the overage there, and then we'll have the capital projects, we'll actually have a bottom line number for you. And so, yeah, you do it once rather than every little thing, but, you know, you can certainly incorporate all of the projects in your motion, but just to do it once versus us having to have you do it multiple times.
Makes sense. Any more questions for Ed? Thank you, Ed.
Yeah.
Committees, the education support.
We continue really, not to have formal meetings, but informal, hands-on, people helping out, whether it was the submit for or the, you know, helping in the school, and we continue to stay in touch with what's going on with Studio Y as a part of what's going on. Thank you.
And W N E S U, I missed the last meeting, I think.
Budget was passed? Have you hired him?
Yeah. I think I already talked about some hiring, search committees going on.
Okay.
Kind of bit.
Great.
There, there is no S U meeting at this point. And actually, this just in, it is possible that we might have a special S U meeting for hiring in Jan, earlier in January than usual, so we'll see.
Ha. Well, that would probably be a good thing.
It would be.
Okay, there's no new business for discussion at this point, so we'll go on to old business for discussion, and that includes reviewing or approving the Act 46 alternative structure documents, which are only, well, maybe you have some.
Yeah, so the, the overall document really hasn't, well, changed beyond, now I'm losing track. You and Brockham both went through this document, you both wanted the same things done, I did so I do have a hard copy if you're not done, but we got to the high school and they sort of started to wordsmith that, and I said, "Stop it, just stop."
Wordsmith. Wordsmith.
And, yeah, I pointed out to them, and Aston's Crafton too. I mean, this is our document, but it's really the state folks that are gonna read it. So it's really not a place to nip it. So anyway, that is what it is. This document, I've just made some little edits in. And this is the one to, you need to vote on and authorize the chair to sign on your behalf. So I'll go through this in more detail. So this becomes part of one of the appendices of the proposal. The first part, the first bullet in this is about pursuing potential economies. The only thing that's changed in there a little bit is in that last sentence, there's some more areas that have kind of popped up as people said, yeah, what about guidance? And what about maintenance? Fine, so, yeah, it doesn't. Item number two is about the food service, which, you know, also with the voting of, approved of voting of the SU budget, it also approved at district-wide in-house food service. The third item is just about consolidating professional development, but we really didn't want to just say it's all gonna be through the SU because there are individual initiatives in the school that I think schools are still gonna put in a couple thousand dollars to, to do this particular thing, you know, that is their interest. And I think that's fine. The fourth item is about the biennial meetings with the Bellasquals High School Board, came out of your meetings with the big joint committee. On the next page, this refers to that goal-setting checklist that we went through the last time. All I said was you'll utilize the goal-setting checklist. I didn't say you would follow it by the book. I should have said you'll utilize it if you want. The next one's about the out-of-school programs task force, that's been in there right along. And then the very last item's about the integrated field report, which you will have by January, January meeting. So if you're okay with this document, what, all the other boards at this point have signed off.
Great.
And between this and the continuous improvement plan that are the last pieces for the section nine, yeah.
And strategic plan. Isn't it supposed to be included, Jim?
No.
Really?
Just to continue.
Just to see if. I thought we talked about it needing to be included also.
Strategic plan for town Westminster.
That makes, oh, that makes no sense. So that's all of them were included.
Yeah, the other boards don't have them.
Okay.
So.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Any questions for this or anyone want to make motion? Is this, oh, this, the 11th is the last time you changed.
Yes. And really note that all that you're saying on here is that you've reviewed that document. Which I kind of went to after the high school meetings.
Does the high school board, they didn't do anything like that?
They did. Yep, I created one for them.
And they're on board at this point?
Yeah, they're good.
And the other towns, it's really identical with the name change to make it applicable.
Yeah.
Any substantial differences between the other towns?
No, I think they were all exactly the same, although the high school board isn't meeting with the high school board in Biennial meetings. It's meeting with the other boards, so.
Right, no, that's great. I do move that the Westminster School Board adopt the Westminster Town School Board actions to strengthen the existing government structure of the Northeast Superhigh School.
And authorize the chair to sign on the board's behalf.
And authorize the chair to sign on the board's behalf. Thank you.
Any further discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Once again, thank you, Chris.
Sure.
But good, I mean, just seriously, seriously, I mean, thanks for being supportive of what I do. And other districts, I don't think all the superintendents have been completely supportive of the board's will, whether they liked it or not, so it's appreciated.
Well, thanks. I get us.
Yeah.
You know, I have my own opinion about consolidation, but that's just my personal opinion. My job is to serve you and the people in town.
It's appreciated.
Thanks.
Okay, super. Let's review the continuous improvement plan. Give me a packet.
So we're on the website. Oh, I say, I need a couple extra paper copies. So I'll let Doug talk about it, but I'll give the overview of, Missy Wilkins, our curriculum grant person, has been dutifully and persistently working with all the principals in the district so that we have a common format for this and also, to some extent, common goals. Because the idea of this really is that, you know, we really should have all the same area, goal areas for students. We want them to be excellent readers. We want them to be able to do math. We want them to get along well with each other. So the humorous part about it has been that when she tried to get consultation from the state about what formatting they would like, they kept telling her, well, send us what we have and we'll use it as a model. So this is obviously a work in progress by the state.
By the state.
And so we are presuming that we're gonna, you're gonna be revising this soon.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, and probably for two reasons. One, maybe we need to integrate the, integrate a field report findings in it. So that's the expectation, you know, that you have this integrated field review and you have assessments and now, you know, you revise your continuous improvement. And the second one being that the state, no doubt, is finally gonna decide on what they really want for a format.
Yeah.
And tell us. But for now, they just, we just shared a, they sent like a thing back, you know, like a sample.
Because they keep saying like, we want it more specific, we want it more specific. And they're really looking for like micro goals is kind of what they're talking about. Like, you know, you're gonna use this reading program with these kids because this research study said that that was okay. Which is great, but they haven't come up with the cross-reference of how that fits with all the required needs that they keep adding in, like, so one, a couple, one of the things I had added in, a technology piece because that's a requirement, that you have to have a technology goal. And then also I had the parental engagement. I did chop out a lot of things from one of the previous versions that were in there because of the way that they were asking for us to be measured. And as Chris said, like when all said and done, like I was talking on the phone with the state about this, they're kind of, well, it's not really what it needs to be, but it's, we don't expect you to be there yet. And then, you know, Chris told you the rest of that story, so.
So you, you, these headlines in a sense or objectives?
Ish. So it started as kind of a whole school effort last year around this needs assessment. And then through working with Missy, through working with the state, like shaping the goals to what I think needed to be the wording annual, so it's really more about the wording. That they, that would be something that would be acceptable.
Doug, I printed the one from the website. It's dated November 27. Do you have a more updated one? I didn't grab one tonight when you were handing them.
No, sorry. That is the correct one.
That is the one?
Yep.
There has been a previous version of this.
Right.
And, um, so you're sort of adapting that plus what you think the state is looking for at this point or what they're looking for?
Correct, yes. One of the processes that I wanted to be able to get to a place of is that, you know, so the staff can sit down and review and every year and kind of like, where are we at? And do kind of a touch base and, since we started all last year, kind of trying to work on what we had, which wasn't what you had prior, but like the new iteration of it, which, you know, is kind of like the handoff and as Steve was leaving, it was like, okay, we're starting this process. We, we haven't been able to sit down and kind of go, so how are we doing on this? Because we haven't had a thing in our hands to say this is, this is the concrete continuous improvement plan that we, that we're operating off of.
Great. This has already been submitted to the state previously or not? I thought you put, sent something in to comply with rules or as a draft?
Yeah, so, yeah, this is, that is what Chris was talking about, also working with Missy a lot to kind of like, we sat down, we talked, we kind of sent it up to them and then they're kind of like, oh, it's not quite what you can use in their advice and feedback, trying to keep working. And then at the last meeting that we just had, which was the one that Chris was talking about over there, it's like, well, send us yours and we'll, we'll send you a template back that, that works, that, you know, makes sense. That was when they were kind of just like, you know what, let us show you, which is like an obvious thing that they should have been doing a while ago, but they didn't.
They've got their own issues up there and it has to do with ESA and requirements in there, actually. Accessing federal grant money, you have to have certain documentation at the school level to kind of check off the boxes, if you will, because that's what federal money's all about. That's still a work in progress, although I have to say, of the ones that I've seen in the district, I'd say Westminster one is kind of the most complete. Having all the pieces and talking about, I don't know, like teachers.
So what's our role with this? Are we, is this like you're reporting, you're working on this? Are you supposed to find typos in this?
Well, your role is, your role is to approve it.
Not like you do it now or?
Yeah.
And it's going to be a part of the package that goes with the alternative governance structure.
And there is a, I don't know if it's statutory, but there's certainly a requirement in the educational quality standards for the boards to review and approve continuous improvement plans.
I think conceptually, you've made a lot of progress with it, Doug, and I'm glad you spent the time on it. I see some new things in here, for example, this is the very last part, working with the community, strengthening the PTO as a platform. You've now included the second cup, which is relatively new. I'm glad to see it in here. You've got some other ideas. You talk about Studio Y, I think to something Rick was about to say, there are quite a few little typos and things of that kind that I don't want to go through here, but I did make notes on it and I'll hand it to you so that you can look for, you know, some of the, I'd like to see it a little tiny bit cleaned up because it's a part of our official submittal to the state. Not just for this purpose, but 40, Act 46.
Well, not only that, but it would normally be a part of your school report that we put together around for town meeting day.
Yeah.
So can you fix those up and send?
I mean, it's a simple thing that the typos, but there's like five different fonts in there. Hurts the eyes. Might help too.
Okay.
I mean, personally, I have a little issue. I mean, I'm not a big fan of saying that SMART board use is mandated and it's somehow an educational improvement. If you guys think that is. What?
In the, all academic classrooms will have a SMART.
Yeah, and teachers are gonna be trained in it. I haven't heard evidence that they've approved anybody's learning. I've heard people saying they're not approved. Maybe you guys have been watching some.
Well, I've seen some pretty darn nice lessons.
I've seen some, but I've heard some preschool saying like, well, that was, you know, they're going away from home. Maybe they use them online. But I mean, as I said, a few guys, if someone here thinks they're positive, drive you.
I don't think you use them six hours a day. They're really powerful teacher presentation tools, you know, when you're doing a presentation or lesson.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion to, to, in regards to this?
So I can make a motion to approve continuous improvement plan with the suggested changes that Doug is going to incorporate?
Yeah, and I, sorry, I just want to talk to, explain a little bit, like these, so these tech goals are ones of things that we're kind of already have or are part of what we're doing or working on. Anyways, this is not, and this was one of the ones where Missy's like, you need a tech goal and so on. Okay, and we need to approve it now, so these are, these are what we came from. You know, so this is not like, I'm not, we are doing this. I do think that there's some neat things about them. I'm not, I don't want to die on the sword of task D2 of objective. So anyways, if the board is like, that's not something I'm doing. I'm willing to add that into one of the changes as far as along the critical.
Something does not.
Any, any further discussion, any further thoughts? Okay, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Great. Thank you, Doug.
Just your favorite thing to do, Doug. I'm so glad it's done.
Take a break for a week or two.
Yeah.
Okay, um, then we have review or revise the board's strategic plan. And, um...
Chris, did you print copies?
I did not.
Okay.
No.
Well.
Don't we, I can print them.
Can you?
Oh, I can project it as well.
Oh, okay, if you were to just project it, that'd be, that'd be safer.
Sorry, I think we, we had that conversation and I was supposed to print it.
Sure, sure.
I'm happy to do that. You know, at our last meeting, actually for several meetings, we've talked about just wanting to revise and to update our strategic plan, which is really for 2016 through 2018, the current period. And we thought it would be a good idea to do it, in fact, even before the 11th. do it, in fact, before the election of officers for the next year, or board members for the next year, so we can hand this off, whatever, to, to the next board, and so I've had a chance to go through it, as has, and Rick has reviewed it as well, and I think what you'll see here, keep going, is this the one that shows my markup? Yes, it does, perfect. So, all we're suggesting here is that we actually, I actually was thinking it was gonna be part of our, our submittal to the state, it's fine that it's not, are we, in fact, the only ones who have written strategic plans from the towns? Okay, so I think what we want to do is look at this, there, you can see, I marked them all in red, so that it's not anything that's that big a deal, so I want to, I recommend that we reaffirm it today, so that it shows that, it's not just student learning, but it's their well-being, I think, that's a big part of what we care about as a belief statement. I think I added, you can see at the very last bullet, community engagement, so democratic practices and global citizenship, right in between, we really want to celebrate the local participation, so recommending again that we kind of show that we updated and approved those statements. Want to stop?
All right, well, I just see you kind of provide halfway, a little more than halfway down, providing.
Oh, I added physical. I did, yeah, as a recommendation to everybody, yeah.
See, learning environment is more personal, emotional, national, physical, and social.
So they're not huge, but that, this, since we were reviewing it anyway, it just seemed like a time to take a look at all the words, and see, in the very beginning, we talk about goals, but we didn't have that language there, so added just goals and focus areas, and then, as you keep scrolling, it's just to update things about reports, because, for example, with this very first one, Doug updates us on the progress toward achieving student learning outcomes, I think, Doug, you almost do that at every meeting, and so it's not just our progress against these local, state, and national assessments of those monthly things designated, but it's really even more. Similarly, we, we get additional reports, so, you know, at the meeting. It's only in red where there are changes, so you've all previously approved them. Multi-age groupings to achieve desired educational results in efficient use, we really haven't focused on this for a while, and so I just pushed the date out. Let's take a look at that again. The MAP, the Community Education Support Committee actually does have a draft directory, and we have, as you know, focused more on Studio Y in recent times, so we do have a draft, we're not focusing on it, we're thinking of that in spirit, so, recommendation here. Important language we've been talking about, I could just make a, a note, that, Doug, I don't know, but you really want to convene an actual study group that's in the plan now, and we might revise that, but you have been bringing to us suggestions and recommendations, and we've got some going on there, and it would make sense to really look at it again this time. Didn't keep going, that's fine. The preschoolers just added, we'd already said, and we've been brought a kind of report on who are the, the children coming along, I think, you've, you know, just put it in writing that we should update our annuals if we're not. I think it would be interesting, this is in our strategic plan, but we really haven't talked about the use of our school buildings and resources as community centers, or how we're reaching out to the public more broadly, so I think that would be nice to do a little more on, and we do a lot more than maybe even the public knows, in terms of what's going on using the buildings. Let me go forward.
I am Leah Seven.
Oh, maybe that's it, let me see. Yeah, and, and Rick, you and I had a little discussion about whether we should put anything in more specifically about, about sharing information with the public, I don't know, do you want to make any comments now, or? Okay. I, I, this is just trying to bring this up to date, and so, less urgent, now that I know it's not going to the state with that package, but still probably help.
Yes, and, and I mean, part of what is in the document we just discussed about approving F-46 is sort of a goal setting, a goal setting, which this will help out, both on the part of every town, and this will help out with that a lot, I think, it'll make a lot.
The other thing I was thinking about in reading the seat, the continuous improvement plan, was to looking for the congruence, and there's nothing really inconsistent between what is in the district's continuous improvement plan and this, and I think they should be mutually compatible, and that's something we've talked about for a while, so I think just with these modest changes, I suggest.
It probably also wouldn't hurt to reference each of them, so that people reading the continuous improvement plan know that there's this, and, and that this has a reference to the continuous improvement.
Okay. Might we do that, Chris, in the CIP, could there be a way to at least reference that this is consistent with the Westminster School Board or Town School District Strategic Plan?
Yeah, no, CIP is sort of school goals, these are your goals.
Yeah, but they, they, they support each other, and that, and that's sort of useful to know.
There's probably a way to do it. Certainly you could reference the CIP board goals.
Maybe if, if this isn't needed as a part of the package going in before December 26, it's still something that I'm glad we have, and that we can pull out if need be.
That is terrific, and I'm very glad you put this together, this is...
No, Rick and I put it together for you guys quite a while ago, but it seemed like time to review it and update it.
Do you have anything to say?
Thanks, Cheryl, for, once again, assiduous detail, attention to detail, reviewing it.
Okay, I think I'd like to have a motion just to adopt the updates.
I make a motion to adopt the revisions of the Westminster School Board's strategic plan, 2016 to 2018.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Great, thank you, Cheryl, thank you, Rick.
I hear some more typo with my...
Similarly, a typo.
Now, appointments, a William Cummins custodian?
So much, this is you?
Yeah, so this is, he already worked for us, here someplace near me, he, when he was hired, he was brought on the zero, uh, step.
New hire.
The new hire step, and he was just, he advocated it to Adam based on his years of experience in union work and such, that this is a step he would want to be at, and Adam thinks that he's been doing a really good job, and that this feels like the right thing to do.
What he did, have some experience that was maintenance oriented, not exactly, not exactly cleaning the school building maintenance, so, support.
Now, increase retroactively means?
He was hired, which I don't happen to have.
Yeah, it was like always.
To the higher day.
So, so that we would adjust the pay from that point on?
Yeah, that's...
You don't have to, you could just increase it now.
Is there, is there a reason why the retroactive was put in there?
Uh...
He would like that.
We may have been habit more than anything else, but often, when we hire somebody who's a support staff member, we can go ahead administratively and hire them at the new hire step, but if we're going to get a, on the more advanced steps, we have to bring that to the board. So quite often, I'm bringing aboard, it's, for example, a custodial hire, and, you know, you're increasing to 24 months, or 12 months, or whatever, and it's retroactive, because the person usually was just hired a few weeks before. So this is a little different, because he's kind of midstream made this request, I will defer to whatever Doug recommends on this, because I'm not really involved in this.
Yeah, I, when Adam and I were talking, I wasn't necessarily thinking retroactively, it makes sense in some ways, like, he had the experience before he came here, but I was not, in my thinking, I just think he's been doing, he's been doing a good job, he's...
I, I would be inclined just to start it, yeah, and just have it be an increase, essentially an increase in pace, right?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, it sounds like, if you just get in trouble, if you, you make agreements with people and they agree to them, and it's really nice of you to change it in their favor, but, you know, it feels really weird if, you know, people kind of expect, well, just start there and this, then you can come back later, and they have a history of doing, making up for it later, I think it's clear to say, "Yeah, you've done a great job, we want to reward you, and going forward."
And a part of the rationale is based on a further review of his background, his credentials, that if more is starting him at this higher rate now, but I fully agree not going back backward.
And as much as I want to be generous, I mean, when you're looking at a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall for the years, you know, it's not easy to say, "Yeah, and we're gonna have unbudgeted money," so.
Any further discussion?
Should be budgeted, because he's replacing someone with a lot more experience, so, so you're okay there, but still, it makes sense to do whatever you want.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion to increase William Cummings to step 12 month status.
Effective.
Effective meeting.
Would we just paper it?
With this paper, with this paper. Any further discussion? Great, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Any further business? Director's comments? Oh, my gosh, I got so involved, I forgot to share.
Share the refreshments I got, oh my gosh.
Well, have a great holiday, everybody, and we'll see you in the new year. Right after the new year.
Right, right.
Okay, Rick? Next meeting, January 2nd, four o'clock at noon. Happy holidays.